All right, Mark, I'm going to start our meeting. All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Hi, thank you for your patience, but we are getting ready to start our six o'clock meeting. Awesome, so today is the November fourteenth. All right, it is my honor to start the committee of the whole for the Gotten Board of Education. Today is November fourteenth and at six o'clock. And the first thing that I will need is the approval of the minutes from last committee of the whole. So I have a, I have motion, can I have a second on that, please? I've got William for the second, is there any discussion on the minutes? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving of the minutes of October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, please say aye. Oppose abstain, and that motion has carried. Before we go into, and first of all, it is really nice to see all the principals. I just really appreciate you guys taking your time out of your really busy lives and coming forward. I really, as, as speaking from the board, we've been waiting for this for a couple of years. And so it's really nice to, to see everyone's faces, and I just really appreciate that. Um, but before we start on your presentation, um, I have, I am going to request, um, if we can move number, number six, which is the enrollment, so that Tom, you can kind of help us through the review of the action plans and then go right into enrollment and then you don't have to wait through. Every once in a while, we'll do something kind, but I just need to make sure that all those in favor of just, just moving up one agenda item. Do I have full approval? Yes, okay, all right, I have to get like, I have to get like a certain member, I, it's all that Robert's rules that finally has sunk in. All right, so we are gonna move on, so Susan, I am.
I'm gonna orient.
If you could orient us, that would be fab.
Well, um, as you know, um, we do have data this year, and I have shared with the Board of Education already, the bird's eye view from a district perspective without having it broken out into the details, school by school. Um, the secondary principals came in and shared their data and their action plans just this last month. And now it's the turn for elementary principals. And when I reviewed it, I know that Tom and Phil were working closely with the elementary principals. I have to say that I was really impressed with your thoughtfulness and looking at the data. You have to look at the shape of the data as well. There were some real aha moments for me, seeing that, knowing that we've been through two full years, three full years, really, twenty-seven months, they say, of COVID. There was the before COVID, they called BC, and the after COVID that they're calling AC. And I'm wondering when that actually will start transpiring, because I still feel that we have the remnants of this, you know, massive pandemic in all kinds of ways, um, you know, academically and socially, emotionally. And this team of rock star administrators have really led the building through this whole thing and, um, have gotten their medical degrees on the side, I think, when it comes to contact tracing. But, um, I, I think one of the best ways that we can run this performance is to let us go through school by school, so you can see the whole picture, and then we'll stop to ask questions. And then after that question and answer and discussion, we'll go into your enrollment, if that makes sense. Does that make sense to everybody? So if you have questions along the way, please just jot them down so that you can save them to ask specific questions, should you have them. All right.
All right. So I just want to orient everybody, um, the slides are all the same for all five of our schools. We just want to make sure everybody kind of understands the setup. So a reminder here, we are talking about fulfillment index, right? So this is not a percentage of students that are out of a grade level, this is not a percentage at all, it's an index, right?
And the target?
And the target, as always, is seventy-five, which are, that is the target that C S D E, State Department of Education, through the ESA plan is set to reach by the end of the twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty school year. So that is the target that we aim to meet on every metric. Um, we have, this is just a one-year comparison, so this is just looking at last school year, it's not looking historical. We did that intentionally because Mystic and Bames really haven't been along, around long enough to do kind of historical comparisons. We want to think about this data as a new baseline for everybody going forward. Um, we have three different bars for each subset, you see, the first group is S back ELA. So we're comparing the school to the Grotten overall average, to the Connecticut, state of Connecticut overall population average. We do the same thing for the math for N S back and the same exercise for S back, or for NGSS, sorry. Um, we do this for three groups of students, we do this for all students combined. We do this for our not high need students and for our high need students. A reminder that our high need students are those students who have I U Ps, um, are receiving E L L services currently or receive free introduced lunch. So those are the subset groups that go into the high needs. Those are the three different categories that the state grades us on with our state report card, which we should have sometime before the new year.
And I found it interesting that we have high needs and non-high needs, and then all together. So that's a different way of looking at it, we haven't really looked at data that way yet. So it's kind of interesting, but the golden rod is going to be each school, and then the red for Falcons is just Grotton, and the blue for Connecticut is there, so.
I did also just want to make note of two things. On these slides for Mystic River and for Bames River, there are two bars that appear to be missing for NGSS. That is intentional, uh, they're missing because the cohort size was too small to disclose publicly. Um, a reminder here, with both of those buildings, there is not a large percentage of students who are not high needs. A very large number of students are high needs, it's a very small part to begin with. Also, we are only counting students who were with us on October one, talk about our enrollment later on, and stayed with us and tested at that same school. Those are the only students who are counted within these councils, a very small number of students who tested on the NGSS, so they were purposely not disclosed for privacy reasons. Wanted to make sure we understood what's in this. Um, do you want me to run, do you want to introduce your slides? Okay, so the first one we have here, so again, this is the group, all students for Catherine Colasty. And again, a reminder, the yellow is the school, the red is Grotton's overall average, and then the blue is the state of Connecticut average. You can see, um, overall, here in all three groups, for all students, Catherine Colasty's outperformed both the Grotton average and the state of Connecticut average.
But tell your story a little bit, because Chris, your, your school has really done some amazing things that when you first became a magnet school, you had a lot of neighbor, neighboring students, and then you started getting more from around the town and.
Well, we opened as a magnet school, but we accepted very few magnet students because Grotton had closed an additional elementary school, so we sort of opened overcrowded. Um, we changed our magnet theme to attract more students, and there was a redistricting in Grotton, so we had space for our magnet students, so they came in. We were identified by the state as a school due in need as a, because of the performance gap of our Hispanic students at one time. Dr. Mitchell was our educational consultant from the state of Connecticut to help us close that achievement gap. Um, and so over time, we've just built up our magnet and the work that we do in the school to improve our students' achievement and help close those gaps.
So I was really pleased to see the shape of the data, too.
Me too.
So here, we're looking at the high need students, so again, this is just Catherine Colasty from last school year, the high need students. Um, you see a little variability, uh, but in both S back ELA and S back math, Catherine Colasty outperformed the district and the state average. And for NGSS, Catherine Colasty, just below the rotten average, but above the state average. And for the not high needs population, Catherine Colasty consistently outperformed both rotten and the state average.
And you would kind of expect that the not high needs group would probably do the very best. And, you know, compared to all three, all the students and then the high needs.
Absolutely, and it is important to remember, too, that in the not high needs group, you're taking out all students who have I U Ps, right? So all, all students who have I U Ps are taken out of this sector, definitely, the problem is always on.
Um, so in addition to looking at that data, our school data team also analyzes the S back data and our district data in a more in-depth level. Um, we look at students in each achievement level, we break it down and look at achievement of our students um, by gender, by ethnicity, um, high needs and non-high needs. We also look at the growth of our students in each of those subcategories, looking at how many students met their growth targets, what percentage of the growth targets they are achieving. Um, so there's a lot of data analysis that goes in. We also, in each area, look at the claims, um, which are the specific areas under English Language Arts, Science or Math, and the targets. Um, and we analyze each section to see if there's an area that stands out as an area of low performance or an area of high performance, um, so that we can make sure that we're not, we're not missing any of our instruction when we're, when we're teaching. For example, if we're looking at the NGSS, we want to compare our performance in the life science, earth science, um, physical science, and in the practices to see, are we doing a great job teaching life science and earth science, but we're falling down in physical science? Um, we want to look at all of those things so that we're sure that we're providing our students with the best education possible. Um, in analyzing it this year, the good news was that there were no areas that stood out as weak areas. Our performance was very consistent across the board. Our students' performance in all areas of science were, were equal. Um, there was nothing that stood out as an area of weakness or something we needed to shore up. And that was the same thing in our math and our language arts. What we did find in analyzing our data is that our lowest performing students and our highest performing students, because we do have two years of being good to compare, um, we're making the greatest growth, but our students are in the middle, we're making less growth than our low performance and our high performance students. And so that became, that was our focus in looking at our data and became a real focus for our action plan, because we feel we've done a great job meeting the needs of our students who need additional support. Um, we're making sure that we're providing the enrichment that our high performing students need. But our students in the middle, we're getting a little lost. And it's not that they didn't make nice growth, but their growth isn't the same as the growth in our other areas. So this is our action plan for this year. Um, we are, we do have intentional use of the interim assessments in grades three to five. We're using them both, and you'll see this for all of the schools, as both teaching tools and assessments for data review, so that we're working with our students on how to tackle the test, um, and how to analyze questions as teaching tools. But we're also using them as assessments for data review, so that we can see how our students are doing in each of those areas. Um, probably the biggest change that we made was a restructuring of our SRBI schedules for this year. We do have a lot more students who need interventions coming out of the pandemic. Um, and so we revised our SRBI schedule so that we're providing um, two SRBI blocks a day, one specifically targeted, uh, English Language Arts, and one specifically targeted as admin. Um, and that way, all of our students who need to receive tier two and tier three interventions can. Um, with only one SRBI block, if a student needed both math intervention and reading intervention, they had to split that time, and they couldn't get a full tier three intervention as needed. Um, and we felt it was really important that they have that full tier three if they needed it. Um, we've also started, um, we're working on progress monitoring of all of our students. We've always progress monitored our low performing students, set individual goals and monitored to make sure that they're making growth. Um, and we've always set additional targets for our high performing students, but we're making sure now that all of our students have individual goals and that we're regularly progress monitoring to make sure all students are making growth. Um, our school focus is accountable talk in all content areas. Um, and accountable talk is making sure it's talk that moves the learning forward. And that accountability is accountability to your community, accountability to accurate information. Um, and I wanted to say one more thing, and I can't remember it. But it's that idea that, you know, students learn how to be good, active listeners, they can rephrase, they can paraphrase, they can add on, so that the conversations that they're having in class are moving the thinking forward and making it deeper. And in doing that, that helps, also helps students improve their written responses, um, because they learn how to think more deeply and how to take those conversations. Um, and the intent is to make sure that we're always building on each other's knowledge and we're supporting each other in developing our knowledge. So that's our school goal. Um, we're also really taking a look at our intentional and flexible grouping, and the intent of that is really looking at those middle kids and making sure that our groupings are not always based, um, on their reading level or math level, but they're also based on skill needs, interests, partnerships, collaboration, so that the, all students are having that opportunity to move forward. And finally, in our science, um, we are doing school-wide use of science notebooks. Um, and we're really going to work on developing the science notebook to make sure that, um, we're increasing our use of models, which is part of the NGSS, um, that helps develop students' understanding of the concepts, um, that they're learning to increase their vocabulary development, um, and to improve their written responses. That's our action.
Yes, yes.
Are you talking about her?
Well. Okay, so for Charles Barnum, uh, the exact same setup. Uh, so the yellow is the school, the red is the Grotton overall average, and the blue is Grotton, or Connecticut overall average, sorry. This is just looking at twenty-one, twenty-two, and the first group is for all students. So you can see consistently, Charles Barnum was above, uh, to both Grotton and Connecticut average for all three test fail students. And that holds true for high need students as well, so they were consistently above both the Grotton and Connecticut average for all of their high need students. And lastly, uh, they only got beat out just in S back math by the state overall average, because they're not high need students. The overall consistently outperforming the overall averages.
All right, so, uh, our action plan, some of this stuff, I'm gonna try and say some of the same things that Chris did, um, but some of it would be the same. Um, we use this as one data point, of course, along with many other things that we use, and I'm a school, I'm sure, and something like that. Um, we're doing a better job of using those interim assessment blocks when they first rolled out. Um, I don't necessarily know that any school was really very good with that, um, to start, but we're, we're being very intentional about doing that now. Focus ones in test settings, um, I did a fifth grade one a couple of weeks ago, um, in math, and arranged the best, just like S back, um, the test setting, we have the building quiet, all of that stuff was a test setting. Um, and I didn't even need to grab the report, because next time I went to meet with the fifth grade teachers, they'd already gotten in there and looked um, where, where the kids fell in that, because they wanted to see those scores right away. So the fact that it's more consistent, and I think we're all doing it, and, you know, data teams are looking at it, the district's looking at it, um, it, it holds weight, it feels a little bit better. Um, and we will go through, um, individually in practice, um, just like Chris said, test questions and format and style, and how to take the test and how to manipulate, highlight, slide things over, back and forth, all of that stuff. I'll jump to the last bullet, which is science. That is also the same thing, um, we're gonna, um, we just, there's a science program over, which has been very good, Ben Moon has done that, and people have been very pleased with that so far. But we're exploring, um, taking the S back interim, which is, NGSS is only given in fifth grade, um, that one test, but taking those intervals and moving them back to fourth grade and the third grade and starting to practice with them so that they see what that test looks like. Um, I don't know if you've ever taken a look at that test, but the first time we pulled that up, it was wild, like, there is so much reading, so much vocabulary. And you have to manipulate stuff on the screen, so even if just the younger kids, even if the teacher just puts it up and they talk about manipulating something, they can at least see it and go through it. So getting that back into the other grades.
I didn't mean to cut you off, but if the board remembers when Ben Moon was here, he did share those questions with us, and I remember all of our brains hurt, you know, just looking at those questions.
Yeah, but, you know, the content may be a little too much for, say, a third grade class, but manipulating things and having the discussion and the exposure for it, so those, all of those in terms and focusing on understanding, looking at that information as we go through, um, is what we're focusing on. And similar to what Chris said, although a little bit different, um, we heard through our, our staff survey that we needed to overhaul, um, our student intervention process. Um, so that's one of the reasons, this is a big piece of that, that first, our child study team, um, for student intervention, whatever you want to call it, is aligned to C T sets, a special ed, because that new program, um, that they're using is requiring much more detail um, and up-to-date small group work, um, that's recorded, um, constantly. So they tried to match, they spent a lot of time matching, uh, what we're looking for in the intervention process, so that if it does move to that next level of special education, they've already got that material appropriately documented, so we spent a lot of time doing that. Um, we're spending a bunch of time on win, which is what we call what I need, it's the SRBI process, um, R T I, all of those things are, they're all the same. Um, and what I need, and making sure that, just like Chris said, we're trying to intentionally, um, have groups put together where there are some interests in groups with kids and matching kids up, making sure that the most needy come out to small group, and we've been doing a lot of pushing as well for those, so there's a lot of work going on in that. Within the classroom, we have a small group focus, um, the workshop model divides it up, but we're really pushing, uh, the fact that we get kids into small groups, they learn well from each other. Um, and it's that same thing, match them up academically, match them up socially, match them up, um, with interest needs and things like that, so that they, they're getting something out of it. I've been in several rooms where I walked in the room for something and sat with a group that I knew she had changed, and she flat out said she changed it, and I left, and at the end of the day, she came in, she goes, that didn't work, we're changing that group again. So they're paying attention to how the group behaves. Uh, like Chris said, progress monitoring, we've always been pretty good for that, but we're now digging a little bit deeper with it and making sure we're very accurate with that. And like I said, when I started, we're using multiple sources of data, like this test, uh, you know, these results came from last year. So these kids, some of them aren't even in our school anymore, we transitioned a ridiculous amount of kids at our school. So, um, it's just one data point for some of them, and we get some new students that don't even have this data point, like, they don't have it, they don't come with it, we don't get records for whatever reason. Um, and the last piece is a little something different, learning walks. Um, it's very much like, if you're familiar with Vow and Teachers College and taking teachers around our school leadership team, which is both admin and staff, it's a small group of people, um, we're gonna look at learning walks. And if we can get back to four building subs, which we're short a couple right now, and provide that coverage, we can start going around. We're gonna start with something that's less intense than maybe small groups or the SRBI process, just to get the format down. But it's very valuable, the teachers can see other teachers doing the same thing, and take ideas from them. Um, if you think of that, I'm in my classroom and I taught math, but I never saw the other math teacher teaching that, because he always had kids at the same time I did. So, um, to see their peers and do that, so that's one of the next steps that we're doing. We discussed it, we haven't started that yet, it's, we've got paperwork laid out, and it's one of those things that it's on our list, but that's what we're looking to do. So it's a few things that we've got, like every other school, I'm sure there's quite a bit more added to that, but that's, sorry.
All right, so now we're looking at Mystic River. Um, I will remind you, you know, the, this does break it into three subgroups, but at the same time, um, the demographic makeups of these groups is very different. That helps explain, you know, that last slide, we just didn't really have enough students to fit into that not high needs cohort. Um, so just a reminder of that overall. Um, for the all students, uh, in E L A, in, as I get it, in NGSS, Mystic River's been very close to the Grotton and the state average, which is just below it. Um, for high need students, um, Mystic River overall, these are state averages, or tied to state averages, but I think just below the rotten average. And for not high needs, Mystic River outperformed, uh, both Grotton and the state of Connecticut for their performance at E L A and math. And again, for NGSS, we didn't have a large enough population of students to expose their performance publicly.
Um, so our planet Mystic River, we, um, I just want to say, I'm super, our staff is super excited to have this gorgeous, beautiful building. Um, in addition to that, just having such a large number of students, we're at like five hundred and twenty-five right now. Um, one of the things we're so proud of with our kiddos is how they've gelled. So we've got kids from across, uh, the entire town, city kids, we have kids in the middle of the town, we have kids over on the Mystic side. It's just truly amazing to see how they've gelled, and we haven't had a whole lot of, you know, issues with interpersonal relationships and things like that. And we house the A P A program in our building, too, and those kids just are so accepted by everybody in the building. So it really, it's, it's something to be proud of, and we're certainly proud of our kiddos at our school. Um, going back to obviously what my two colleagues before me had said, we, we, we take all of the information that we've got, particularly to our S back assessments, and we have a school-based data team as well. Um, and we, we met, uh, prior to the school year starting, we met, uh, the beginning of the school year, and it was, um, it was a team effort in terms of where we're going from here. So, you know, I think, as was indicated, this is our second full year, uh, as a brand new school. So last year was really what I consider to be my true, um, data point, you know, my, my baseline data, if you will. Um, so one of the things that we, we knew right away, just based on our high level of students that are, that are high needs, is we spent a lot of time looking at our SRBI, in particular, to our tier one and tier three interventions that we'll be providing those students in both E L A and math. Um, so what we've done is we've created a very tight eight-week cycle for math and science. Um, it involves, um, push-in for student supports by our, um, E L A and math specialists in the morning, uh, as students are, um, you know, in math, in, in the math and E L A box. And then it is a pull-out model to the afternoon during our SRBI block, for those kids that are really in a bit of a bear chill, the needs. Um, our classroom teachers are grouping, um, students together based on those target areas and areas of focus. Um, this is the opportunity for us to look, for, for us to really look at those kids that are on the cusp. But for also, we, we do have a population of students that needs to be enriched as well. So it, it's really a, a close look at the groupings of students that target those needs, not just all of our students that are in need of a, you know, pretty what I consider severe intervention. Um, progress monitoring is something that we do, um, weekly. Our E L A specialists meet with grade level teams when we take a look at the data in front of us. Um, we meet as a, uh, building, uh, data team twice a month, and we review math and E L A data in terms of how it's working in the process. Um, we started this, uh, SRBI block last year, and one of the things that we were really proud of when we looked at building level assessments, Bass in particular, we were, we were, um, super excited to see the growth that kids made in the year. So throughout the year, they came in, many of our students came in very low. Um, but as they left us, they were in a much better place, many of them were making years' growth in reading. So that was, that was, for us, was a huge success, and we spent time, um, like I said, at the beginning of the school year, really with the, with our SRBI block, and in our model of intervention, we made some changes to include a, uh, eight-week cycle, so that we could really closely look at data. At the end of that eight-week cycle, we really take a look at the kids that are still in severe need, and we make plans for them. Um, Steph mentioned our SRBI process, we call it our child study team, and we really closely take a look at students that might possibly need something else, if it's a referral to special ed or something like that. Um, we are planning a very deliberate focus on our I A Bs, our interim assessments this year, um, specifically with math and E L A. Um, our, our teachers are very, um, excited about the process in terms of how we're, um, utilizing that data within our data teams to take a look at, same thing, where those areas of focus need to be, where kids are struggling, where kids are doing really well, and how we can. Where kids are struggling, where kids are doing really well and how we can meet those needs within our instructional blocks. Our science, I have to be honest, is where we all felt we needed to really. Think about that as Tom had just displayed our our scores. You know, it was just our last year's grade five kiddos that took that assessment. We had a very small population of students that weren't high need students. But with all of that said, we really need to look at our science instruction in general. So we spent a lot of time talking about the use of our science notebooks. I know Chris had mentioned that. With particular emphasis on the experimentation process, a lot of those questions revolve around. Students looking at an experiment, interpreting information, talking about it and trying to glean information to answer questions. We thought it was a really great idea to focus on how they're responding, they're responding and writing. In our science notebooks, building vocabulary as well. And taking a look at how they work through science experiments. We too looked at pushing back those science intrums to grade four and three. I think I I feel like it's not just us. Given an opportunity to wait till grade five can utilize them, grade four teachers need to see what it is that. Great, what was expected of grade five students when we take this assessment.
And the fifth grade test is a combination of. Things they've learned in third, fourth and fifth, so it really does make sense. We can break apart these. You know, small focus unit tests that the state provides. So that it covers the material they're doing in third and then in fourth and then in fifth. So it does make sense.
And one of the things that our teachers were talking about, it's really important for third and fourth grade teachers to see. What is the expectation and ramifications? Well, it's not just that they're being tested on something that they've already learned. But how are they being asked to interpret it and respond to it? You know, to look at some kind of a data, like if it's an experiment that's put out for students. And they have to interpret some kind of lab or something like that. Those those kids that are in grade three and four, they need to be able to start to. Start that process in their head, those teachers really need to see how it is that they're being tested. So. That is something that we're actually doing this year, we did that last year. But I think it's also for us, it's a really a a hyper focus on. How we're utilizing those I A Bs in grade five to really determine focus topics. To be able to say where are students still struggling with with that information, Susan had just mentioned that. It really relies on what's being taught in the younger grades. Really a focus on implementation of our track units that were revamped last summer. Our teachers are very excited about that and I think it's important for us to make sure that. You know, those are being done with fidelity. And lastly, an increase in emphasis on our number strings for math with fluency and accuracy. So that's part of our math workshop as well.
There's a lot of different words and terminology. I think sometimes a picture's worth a million words and to be able to. Show you what one of these I A Bs looks like or to show you what a number string looks like. Would give you a real good indication or even. If we could videotape a classroom where it's happening. You know, so you could see a snippet of the depth of knowledge that kids bring to. Problem solving or to experimentation or. To analyzing characters traits over time. And what was the author's purpose? You know, so it's really pretty sophisticated, I would say. In reading, writing, math and science in the elementary grades. So.
Clarification, for the benefit of people who may be listening on television, when using broadcast. If we're not using math and first, we define the thing that the acronym stands for.
So clear on to Northeast Academy, again, same exact format, we're starting with all students. So looking at the smarter balance D L A, smarter balance math and the next science standards. So across the Board Northeast Academy up on the Groton and the Connecticut averages for all students. And the same exact trend for high needs, where this can be out of the E L A map and N G S S. And for the high needs students again, with. Every single category, northeast category, so just gotta be out the phone for Groton and Connecticut.
Alright, so I'll do my best to. Explain as many of these acronyms as I can, because I know in our world, we need to use like the back of our hands and we. We use them interchangeably. So we, we are very happy and proud of our data as a staff. One of the first things that I showed. Our good team when we came back to school at the end of. At the end of August was our cohort data and our forward data, meaning how our kids are growing from one year to the next when we looked at. Grades three, four and five, all testing grades from last year. To two years ago. Despite all the challenges, the challenges that we faced over the last, would you say, twenty-seven months or so. All of our testing grades showed growth. From the year twenty twenty-one to the year twenty twenty-two. So we were really happy about that as a staff. It's not just about the work that happens in third, fourth and fifth grade, but it's also about the work that happens in the primary grades as well. So when we talk about I A Bs, those are interim assessment blocks, those are the practice tests. I think as Seth was saying earlier. The the bar graphs that you're seeing, that was a snapshot in time of how kids performed last May. And now we're looking at how kids are doing with interim assessments, essentially practice tests now. So we really will pull those apart. The system itself is really user friendly. It allows you to. To do an item analysis, to take a look at, and this is really. An efficient part of the program to look at the five best and worst questions. And you see a lot of similarities, you know, Phil was at data team meetings last year where. We looked at questions between fourth and fifth grade. And despite the the different passages and the different content per se. What the kids were struggling with was very consistent from one grade to the next. And that's very eye opening for teachers to see. And to hear from their colleagues down the hall. So. You know, we do these amongst our our whole school data team, but this also happens. In in team data team meetings as well. You've heard a couple of these, these these bullet points already, we are putting a lot of work this year into matching test claims to standards. And the units of instruction and really you're looking at the sub, the subparts of the test. In the reading world, you're looking at how the kids are doing with listening versus reading versus writing and trying to really get a sense of. Where the data may be breaking down so that you can have a plan of attack there. The state has testing blueprints, which really outline. Clusters of questions, essentially, you know, what, how many questions there will be for this claim and for that claim and. Matching those together really brings the test life to your eyes. We've been able to return to co-teaching reading in grade one through five at our school and. And just to give you a sense of what that looks like for forty-five minutes to an hour every day. In grades one through five, there's either a reading specialist or a special education teacher that's present in the room for that entire block of time. And it's really the the power of numbers. You have two trained staff able to work with twenty to twenty-four kids as opposed to one person and twenty-four kids. When you're trying to confer with kids and meet with kids during the workshop model, run a small group guided reading perhaps. You're really able to get a lot more done. With two trained staff in the room. So that really is wonderful. We'd love to be able to do that in in math, but the staffing is is not necessarily the same there. And then just one more thing on the I A Bs, we've already started to do this. We have our math specialists already pushing in during tier one math, tier one, meaning the daily math lesson that students receive. To start to fill in those gaps on those practice test data sets that we already have. You know, we saw a pattern last year. With with a number of our kids really struggling on the math test itself, we had twenty percent of last year's third grades of this year's current fourth grade. Was level one in math last year, thirteen kids. And we really wanna make sure that we are, we are getting into our third grade classrooms right away to work on the things that we know that count. Huge point of consistency we've heard across the table is SRBI, scientific research based interventions. This was a major overhaul that we had started last year in our building. In terms of. Not just progress monitoring, but really looking at individual students and making decisions based upon. Their progress or lack thereof. Last year, we had our our whole team of reading specialists and math tutors. Sharing that lift, which I think all of us can agree has been very heavy. This year, certainly in the reading world, we've been able to. To shift that lift over to our full-time tutors so that our reading specialists going back to. That bullet up top can support and lift tier one instruction during the day. In terms of instruction and planning, our district math specialists did a wonderful, amazing job. At the end of last year, really overhauling our math pacing guides. And we are really sticking to those this year. It is a, it is a, it is a point of discussion every time I get together with our teams, we're doing math check-ins to make sure that we're on pace. And that we're balancing both of our programs. And that we're sharing that information with our math specialists to support teams as needed. You've heard this as well, intentional incorporation of. Not just terminology, but question types. I went to a conference a couple of weeks ago up in Hartford and. One of the groups was talking about the power of brief rights. And really giving students intentional. Planned opportunities to respond to what they're reading. Via writing. And that is something that we need to give kids ample opportunities to do and not just. Assume that they know how to do that. That really has to be purposeful. And then I just wanted to echo something that Seth said. We do plan on bringing back learning walks this year as well, putting together a team of teachers and. Going into each other's rooms, not evaluatory and just having some open discussions about. What does, you know, good math instruction look like or how is my partner teacher down the hallway doing this and. Maybe I could take that to my classroom as well. So. We're excited to bring that back. We had. Done a little bit of that pre-COVID and. And that had stopped pretty quickly, but we're we're excited to bring that back.
Thank you. That's better. Alright, so last but certainly not least, or maybe we're saving the best for last, everyone will look at it. We've made Fame's River. So I I again, I would point out that the demographics of our buildings are very different. So again, once we get to that third slide of N G S S, we will be missing a bar. We just didn't have a lot of students who were at Fame's River for the entire year, who were considered not high needs to be in that testing group for N G S S. Just putting that up there again. For all of our students, so you'll see that Fame's River consistently outperformed both the Groton and Connecticut average. The both E L A math and N G S S. That trend continued for the high need students as well.
We always like to see this especially. That our high need students are, you know, outperforming. The district average and then the state average.
Absolutely. And for our not high need students, again, this is a very small cohort overall, even in E L A and in math. But we see them outperforming both the Groton and Connecticut average in E L A and math. And again, too small a cohort for us to disclose for N G S S.
Alright, we were just excited to have data to start the year, similar to Steve, obviously, it's our bench chart here to start as being the whole. So something not shown in that data that was. That actually never happened to me before as a principal of Groton. And seven students scored perfect scores on the S F A P. Yeah, it was pretty incredible, some in third, fourth and then fifth grade. Perfect score. So really just proud of them. It's not shocking because the students were really high form in the whole year, but. To get a perfect score, I mean, that was pretty incredible. So just wanted to. You know, give that a shout. Alright, so let's start. A lot of fans clearly, so our I A Bs on Ryan doing a fantastic job giving you all the back. We're doing those in math, E L A and science, and we have brought them down to three, four as well for science. One thing we actually started to do also is do what's called focused I A Bs. So. We will give the I A Bs, but then in some grade levels and depending on which. Concepts are working on, we might do what's called a focused I A B. So you might have an I A B about fraction. But a focused I A B is could be on like comparing fractions. So it depends. On the grade level and what they wanna pull in and and really assess further for students. So it's just more of a focus. So our planning instruction, so basically we also have an SRBI, but we call it when, similar to Seth, what I need block. We're pulling out our tier two, tier three students. But we also have our specialists, our tutors, interventions going in during workshop, similar to all the other schools. I adjusted the schedule slightly so that the small group time is when they're going in. So this way they're able to kind of flood more classrooms and be able to hit those small groups. And I'm honing in. So if the teacher is pulling a small group. The specialist or tutor intervention is obviously is pulling a small group as well. And during that time, for wind block time, though, going back to that. We're able to give some extra overflow because Chris was saying how some students may need math and reading. So we're able to kind of have an overflow block when we can, depending on the grade level. And during those overflow blocks, we're providing book clubs for students who may need. Extra support with literacy at their reading level. So they may be working on a targeted skill during. Scheduled wind block, but during overflow, we'll say, oh, let's pull in and do what we call book clubs. We can also do enrichment during our wind time on. Our math specialists have been taking our fourth and fifth graders on specific days of the week and doing some P O Ws. Which we just call the problem of the week. So she'll set them up with sort of enrichment math problem and then they work on it throughout the week. And then they come back and they talk about what they found in that problem and how they solved it. Actually, this year too, we started on using our America representatives and for enrichment for a very small group of fourth and fifth graders. To tie in some science enrichment for them. They wanna study environmental change and the impact it has on us. And then we also have overflow block for dream box because some students really do need some extra support. And sort of sustaining a dream box, really understanding that math program and and talking them through problems. So. Just a little deeper dive for dream box with a separate group that they pull out for.
And that's what we use for math.
Yes.
Mathematics.
Modeling, okay. So obviously modeling and teaching, Ryan literally just said it, brief writes. So brief writes have been on the S F A P, but they needed a comeback really strong last year. And some of our high kids were even kind of thrown with it because they really hadn't had that well explicit teaching in it. So when we went to go review it, when we went and looked at our S F A P scores at the beginning of the year through our school data team, our instructional data team. There was a total common thread of thirty, four and five, all having just a struggle with that brief rate part. And there is a rubric that S F A P gives to you of how they're scoring it, but there's no real examples. So we're hoping, and we did set that as a school improvement goal this year to give at least three. Of the brief rights for S F A P and the interim assessment blocks. To see how they do with it after teaching explicitly of how to do it. And then building the anchor set for that so that they then have a model, they'll use kid write their own authentic kid writing as well. And what a brief write is. Kind of complicates, because students have to kind of finish an elaborate paragraph or they might have to write an introduction for a paragraph. And sometimes it really depends upon. The topic for a student, you know, if they can really hone in and elaborate on one. So it's kind of teaching that skill. The next one, use of equity lens for classroom visits. So when they're talking about learning walks, we have the privilege of having Dr. Cherry. Sunny Cherry Paul come to things. First, and we did classroom visits using what she developed for us through the equity lens. And we really latched on to that. It's broken into engagement, relationship and physical environment. So when we went to the different classes. We each sort of sort of had that lens. So I might have been looking for physical environment and. Another person looking for engagement of students in that relationship. And what it really boiled down to was sort of best practices. So we've been using that as. Even if you're picking one from each of those categories, whether it's hearing like. More student voices or the arrangement, right, of how you do, Chris was saying, sometimes you do arrangement based on. Behaviors, right, in a classroom, or maybe we should do it on ability. So you're really looking at it differently or having. It in different groups depending on your day and what the lesson's flowing through. So. We're kind of streaming that through our different areas of curriculum. You said two pens, so two pen kind of goes with, did you move it up? Number strings, you did, you kept it there. So two pen and number strings. So number strings, similar to what Steve is doing, we're really focusing on accuracy and fluency to then. Hopefully apply it to problems. Number strings are a way a teacher will start a lesson with a string of different equations. That kind of go build upon each other. And it's really cute since September, I've been in rooms and students, you know, will be able to guess that next. Equation, the number string and teachers are like, oh, you know me so well, you know, as far as because they do predict what'll come next based upon the one. And then they use the number equation prior to then solve the next number in the string. And then the two pen assessment is a nice assessment that will sort of just test a student on. Their fluency and accuracy of. Depending upon what school they're working upon. And it's called two pen because they literally will do one, you know, using one color. For a certain period of time and then they change the color after a certain set period of time to see. And then you can go back and see the structures and patterns of how a student answered those questions. And then research magnet theme topics to cite evidence. So something with this is. We're using, so you're going into a text and then writing about it, what. Ryan actually just was saying as far as having students then go back and cite the evidence from a text and their writing is always a. A task, but to use our magnet theme, so they might instead research a. And the writing is always a task, but to use our magnet theme, so they might instead research a marine animal. To kind of tie it in, it's really nice. For science, science notebook, so that is something all the other schools are doing as well, whether it's kindergarten labeling or, you know, fifth grader labeling and sorting. Or sorry, I got sorting, but labeling, writing about their findings. I was in a science lesson the other day where they were talking about chemical and physical changes, and so they were doing all of it, illustrating, labeling, and writing about their findings. And then teaching cross curriculum, so we are doing that, where we're developing lessons, so we're taking our pacing guides. And looking at it and seeing how we could infuse the magnet theme, so if the writing say about an argument, they might talk about environmental changes. And connecting nest lessons, so similar to really tying it into the cross curriculum, or they're going to use nest lessons after those. They're use those for spring word to other lessons, so an example the other day was. If fourth grade is learning about weather and nest, they may then tie it into social studies, talking about the different regions and the weather in those different regions.
And that stands for?
New England Science and Dailing.
And that's part of our partner.
Correct, yeah.
Do you have the flexibility to go to toggle between the PowerPoint so I can see people? Because that would be, have you, have you found that my new word for the week is toggle? Toggle, go between. But so this is the, so people have questions?
All right, I'll start off. So I think everybody's doing a fantastic job, I like their plans and everything like that, but really what I want to know is better data. Like high needs, you can obviously tell some of these grade schools have markedly higher numbers of high need students. What is that number? What is that percentage? And the three criteria, break that down, there's three criteria to be high need. So is there a difference between those that are getting the high needs criteria for what's a free lunch, right, as well? So what do those students look like for each, each school? I want to know, like. All the principals have done a phenomenal job with their presentations, so I'm very comfortable with that. I want to know that you have the resources. I mean, looking at Mystic River School. You can tell that your high needs numbers must be very high because your scores. Your, all student scores are closer to the high need scores than to the not high need school. So what are your resources? You know, are they, you know? Based on those high needs students, you know, that would make me feel comfortable knowing that, you know, we have a standard process. For, you know, teacher high need student ratio and other resources that you need, you know. That's my biggest concern with all, with all of this is. You know, how are we addressing the high need students? What does that data look like? And what are the resources? And is it specific for each, you know, high needs population?
It's hard to look at it because we only have the, we just have that. And so I understand why we did that, because if historically, like you and you would be. Stuck because you wouldn't have that, and also our populations look different because we've opened up the two.
Right, and if you look at their two scores too, they're, they're very different as well.
Right.
The high needs population for Mystic is. Is there a difference with those three, you know, criteria to be high need compared to our school? And is that the area that there's an opportunity, you know? Recognizing of the high needs populations at each individual school, which one? Needs more resources of those three?
So we really carefully monitor with staffing the number of cases and the hours to the number of special educators. So we, we do that really few times a year, we're constantly monitoring to make sure we have those resources. Those two schools are the largest and they have the most significant programs, the ABA program at Mystic River. And the Academy Program, Jamie School, that's why this board did it, did them such a great favor by. Getting an additional. Assistant principal. And in each school, they have an assistant principal that really understands special education. So in addition to, you know, having a principal and an assistant principal. But even with the numbers, I think you have an extra math specialist. And, and then the interventionist, like the special educators, we look at caseload and number of students. So they have had some of those resources, but we constantly will look at that. Because your point is, we'll take in William, that you have to look at, you know, the dynamics of the schools. When we closed four and opened the two. We did balance our schools better, so in other words, we, we do have a closer balance. And actually Mystic River and Thames River are nearly fifty fifty free and reduced lunch. And, you know, to people who can pay for it. Northeast is a little different, you know, they don't have the same percentage of kids who would get free and reduced lunch. So those, we do disaggregate that quite a bit, just to make sure that we've covered our bases. For the supports they need.
I will say, I'm sure in the future, last year we did do a more in-depth kind of enrollment presentation. That was much longer, the main presentation of the night, when we did go into kind of all of those breakdowns for school buildings, I'm sure.
And that will be coming, yeah.
Yeah, this is more of just a general view on our total numbers tonight, but we did do that last year and I'm not sure we'll be doing that.
And I just had to, we, we have looked closely in our school at our EL students, our students that are English language learners. Mystic River to science, number of, of those students out of the elementary school. So we've been working with central office and having a conversation about how we better meet those students, their needs as well. We do have several tutors that are in the building that service children throughout the day. And we do share a teacher through with, with other buildings as well, that are specific to English language learners. But that is something that has come up on our radar for sure, because those students are all taking this test as well.
That's right, and we actually did provide on Tuesday a specialized program for regular classroom teachers. To get a depth of knowledge on strategies that work for EL students, so we had a professor from Southern Connecticut State University spend a whole day. With the teachers, so.
Yeah, and that reached a small population just because of how we had our P B laid out. But it's our intention to really take a closer look at that. The, the one thing that always works for us is when you talk to teachers and they say, oh my God, that was worth our time. So our, our teachers from Mystic that went to that workshop, they couldn't say enough about it. So I feel like that is an important tease.
And that's actually going to continue.
We need to be able to get everybody, you know, cycled through it.
Thank you. I'm a bit confused. Which is not anything new. I understand that the index is a requirement of S E B. We need to honor, we need to report it, but where I remain, I mentioned this at the last group in the high school and middle school. I looked at the F and P tours as they came in, and as I understood them, observing the right to be wrong. We still have a large cohort of kids who are not at grade level in a number of subjects, almost from elementary all through high school. And I understand, we have a chat, it's the assistant superintendent. That there, there are some kids, whether it's cognitive or social, physical, emotional needs, for whom growth is the appropriate way to measure their progress. But I don't think they represent, I'm speculating because we don't really know. We haven't broken out this number of those who are not at grade level, is the what percentage are people for whom growth is the proper model? And what percentage of people whom, we can, we just need to give them a little more push to get them over the top. So I'm, I'm hoping we can. And, and we also said that, I pushed Tom last time, we'd love to try to give it a. A sense of when we get to the seventy five, not yet. When we get to the seventy five, what would that do in terms of grade level? And I understood Tom to have said things correctly, if I'm wrong, that'd be about seventy percent, which means thirty percent are not. So there's no criticism intended whatsoever, we're never going to be perfect, but how we pursue perfection. Can we get more figures that on, on all of these indexes, will they give us some approximation of what this means in terms of grading? Because of course a kid will improve in growth over the course of a year. But if there's still twenty percent kids who are otherwise capable graduating without being at grade level. I imagine it's a concern that we all share. Can we, can we generate some figures that will help elucidate this process? I think it dovetails with what William said.
Yeah, I, I think what you're asking is, is there a way to? Well, I guess, I guess I look at it two ways. Are you asking to use the same metric or present it in a way that might give you a frame of reference? So you can understand what that might mean in terms of where students fall within grade level expectations? So what does a sixty five performance index equal, for example? Or you asked us to find a different metric?
I guess my question is, what's our baseline metric? Because sometimes we talk about growth, and sometimes we talk about grade level. There's a kind of amorphous, at least in this core brain, there's some kind of amorphous flow that I really can't get my hands on. I don't know enough to tell you what you should be doing.
Yeah.
I think they're foolish to try.
I think for this year, I, I think it was important for us to find a metric that we could use universally for all buildings. I think going forward, where now we have this baseline data, there's the opportunity to next year to look at, because we would have that ability to track growth for all of our buildings.
That's true.
So I think it's, it's very possible next year that growth is the better metric to use as a group as we come and do this. That just wasn't possible for all of our buildings. I will say, you know, the, the one limitation with growth that I see for Groton specifically, which is difficult, is just the. Transcency of our population, right, we talked a lot about this last year, I forget what the number we had, we had something, you know, we had. Something like ten or fifteen percent of our students come in and we get almost the exact same number.
It was three fifty, three fifty one.
Right, so we had three fifty students go out and three fifty one come back in last year, none of those.
During the year.
Yes, during each year, and that's typical. So none of those students will be able to be included if we are doing a growth presentation. So I think it is difficult from that standpoint for Groton specifically, and that would also negatively impact someone, you know, like Seth in this presentation. Where he has a large amount turned over at his building, so his cohort would be extremely small. So I think it's valuable to look at that data, but when we're trying to do something where we have to be consistent for all five buildings. This is kind of the best metric we have, understanding fully, it has limitations to be able to interpret that data. I think this metric is very useful on a student by student basis. Chris said it very, you know, well before, sorry, I'm going to put you on the spot, because I can't think of how you articulated it. But she was talking about how the performance index is useful at the student level, do you mind trying to think of how you said that earlier?
So the performance index gives you a much more specific indicator of where a student is. Along the spectrum of, say, a third grade student or a fourth grade student on the S back. If I can say that a student is exceeding. Or they're meeting the expectation that they're. I want to say that they're, you know.
Near, near, near.
The expectation are below. But that's a whole range of students, when I say that you're performing at, you know, that you met the expectation on the S back. There's a whole range of students in there, there are students who came in just one point over. And there are students who are just one point away from moving up.
Yeah.
So the index gives you a more specific number as to where that student is. So if you're looking at an individual performance index on a student. I can watch from year to year and actually better see the growth of that student. Because they might be at level this year and they might be at level next year. But they could be at level barely this year and at level way up at the top, almost to exceeding. And, and I can't see that.
Test which has different range.
If I'm just looking at who's at grade level or who's exceeding. So the index narrows it down to, it gives you a much more specific look within that range. So the school performance index is just an average of all of those individual indices, right? But as you see that school performance index rising, because it would be based. On students who are with you October first every year, you can see growth within the school. So and if your performance, so the other piece of that that I think I was saying is. You know, people get really confused about that number seventy five, why is it seventy five and not ninety or a hundred? And it's because seventy five is that on grade level. That ninety two or a hundred index are those students who are performing way at the top of exceeding. Because it's a, up, up to a one ten scale for the index. And we can't expect every student to be above and beyond exceeding. That seventy five is expecting that on the average, our students are meeting grade level expectations. There might be a few below, there might be some above. But that seventy five is really what you're looking for, for that middle on grade level expectations. Does that help?
Actually, that has helped quite a bit.
I know.
And maybe, maybe it's the seventh millionth time with a different voice. But Chris, nice job, I, I actually now feel like I.
We're, I'm still having a hard time and I'll, I'll, I'll drop it after this, because I may be the only one.
This is my nerdy area.
When, when we, when we look, when I looked at the F and Ps, as I understood them, I may be mistaken. We still have. I don't know how we establish what's a grade level, that's okay. And, but we have something that's established a grade level for ELA for grade ten, whatever, whatever the grade level is. And we have so many below that number, I don't know how that handshakes with what you're telling me. I did understand what you say, but how does it handshake? And what can we learn from that handshake?
When you, when, well, first of all, think about F and P is one, that's one reading assessment. And really, it's, we're looking at two things, we're looking at, well, three things, we're looking at the student's ability to code a text. To read it fluently and to answer comprehension questions. But the way that that one test is administered is very different from what an S back reading test is. Is asking students to do. So they're really, while they're, they, they're connected, they're all about reading. We're looking for kids to perform in two different ways. But if you look at my, if I look at my F and P scores, I've got students that are below. I've got those students who are, you know, right around that grade level. And then I've got the ones that are above, it really does pretty much mesh with what my ELA scores are.
And overall, we do see correlation.
Well, if the superintendent would allow me to invite her for a cup of tea or coffee.
Oh no. I've got room in my day.
Thank you so much, that was really helpful. I am going to recognize Beverly.
Thank you, Kim. Thank everyone for the presentation, I didn't see all of it, but I saw the end part of it. My question is, that you're saying that most of our students are at grade level. And that's where we want them to be. Did I miss hear that?
I didn't hear that.
Well, the majority of our students are at above.
The majority of the students are grade level. Is that what I heard?
Okay, Beverly, I'm not quite sure if I understood your question, so I apologize, I'm now.
No, I didn't have a question yet, but I'm just reiterating what I, what I think I heard. So did I hear that most of our students, we want our students to be at grade level, did I hear that?
Yes, that's the goal.
Yeah, okay, that's the goal, okay. So if we have the NYPD in the IB and AP, are those programs at grade level? Or those programs exceeding grade level?
I would say that they set the stage for having. Better foundation of skills, I don't know that you can equate it to a reading level or a math level. But certainly there's more rigor, there's more expectation of the workload and the. There's more expectation of the workload and the depth of thinking that kids will do in those courses. And our job, I think, in the elementary, Beverly, is to give them all those opportunities in the elementary level to kind of have them more ready for that more advanced thinking in middle school, NYPD, and in the high school.
So our at-grade-level students, can you tell me they would be successful at the NYPD and IB and AP programs?
Yes, we believe they will. Um the ones that are not quite there yet, either they're just a little off or maybe they're a whole year difference. You know, especially a child who is in special education and has an IEP. They're getting different levels of intervention. So a a brief intervention might just be an extra reading group with the classroom teacher. Um that would be like a tier one in the classroom. A tier two might be with a reading specialist or a math specialist. Um and additional or a tutor, additional reading and zeroing in on what their strengths and weaknesses are. And then a tier three and special ed are more intensive, you more time of for intervention. But one of the things that is true is we don't have any of our children missing their core instruction. That is so important. It used to be in the good old days, kids were pushed and pulled out of all kinds of core instruction. And so they didn't get what the other kids got. In this day and age in elementary, they all get the core instruction and they get enrichment opportunities with the magnets. And when they need more, we give them more instruction that's very targeted to what their needs are. So it really is a good system. That's why I think we see the growth that we see. So we monitor growth because we want to see every child grow, whether they're, you know, needing a lot of intervention, whether they're needing a lot of enrichment, like Chris said. Her both ends were seeming to make best growth, but then she started looking at the middle, the kids who are at grade level. And she said, design programs with her staff to say, how can we help them to make significant growth? So I love that that our teams in the schools are looking at this so so carefully and trying to understand and make sense, because the closer you are to the child, as you know, those principals and those teachers, the more that they know the child and can analyze and have a handle on what Matthew is asking. So who are these kids? What are what's happening with them? And how are we helping them to grow and to get at grade level? That was my long-winded answer. I don't know quite if that got answered, Beverly. Um cuz in my in my brain, I put AP and diploma IB in a separate in a separate location where I saw, see if you guys have taught me well. The IB and the NYPD is a roadmap to help kids learn in a more rigorous, more inquisitive way. So it's not a program. How am I doing? But NYPD sets the stage for that and all kids get NYPD, right? That's, yeah, I think I said.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I said. So my only question is, um how are how are our kiddos doing? Um and does it influence the scores in terms of coming back into classroom on a day-to-day basis, coming back from the pandemic? Like, what are the behaviors? What are our? I I I just think that we hear at a national level about what what what's happening with our our um school kids. And I'm just wondering what what our buildings are looking at and and such. And I and part of this was spurred, and please don't feel, don't look at me so awful, is that on my Facebook feed, there is a principal, I think he's down south, and he was pretending to talk to, I don't know what his name is, but he's on pretty frequently. And he was pretending to talk to a school board member and and talking about test scores, and that's fine, and goes, well, you know, sir, we just got we just got back from a a pandemic, and so what we're really going to be doing is holding our, you know, keeping our kids, um loving our kids, helping our kids grow, helping our kids um uh learn, because we we've just all gone through this really difficult thing. And so I was just, as I was preparing for today's, tonight's meeting, I was just wondering about what you all were seeing in terms or hearing from your teachers.
Well, Jerry, what first?
Thank you. Oh, but.
He's hilarious.
He is hilarious. I do recommend him.
Yes.
Yes. So his last one was that he was taking a phone call from a school board member.
My first response would be, we have a a school-based health center to northeast this summer. We share the the behavioral health clin- clinician with Barnum. And uh when I was looking at the initial, the contract over the summer, it said on there twelve referrals by the end of October, and I thought to myself, gosh, that just seems like a a high number in two months of school, and we hit it. And and that was pretty quick. Um we also share a social worker with with Seth's school, and the need is there. You know, we have a full-time psych. We share those other positions with two other schools. And the need is is really clear. You know, we have, we have kids that have trauma, both inside and outside of the school, but we also have families that are seeking the assistance for their kids that have kind of come out of the woodwork, to be honest, in the past year or so. So um just to give you a sense of how we're utilizing those people, the the need is clear.
Yeah, and once again, I'm not, I'm not, it's not a the reason why the test scores are because of this. That's not what I'm saying, but I just think that is a, we can get really stuck on data. We can get really stuck on the index scores. Um but if we're not taking a look at sort of what, you know, sometimes just to manage a classroom.
Sure.
Um must be really difficult. And so I just wanted to make sure that that voice got heard as well.
And we also saw the need from the staff to build those skills in their in their teaching, in their instruction and their planning. Um we brought that into the middle, um I'm sorry, it was offered at the middle school, but it was offered to the entire district also last Tuesday. Through the 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 Department of Family Services uh on how to how to work with children and families who have experienced trauma. Uh and that was something that was asked for by the staff, and luckily, we were able to to get something. That's something we're going to look to continue to do.
Us. And you also provided.
Really focus on academics, but like you said, we we could have done, we could have all added SEL components to what's going on.
And and I and I and I appreciate that, but I guess for me, I saw that in absence, and so I wanted to make sure that um that we hear you, like that we that we're we're hearing that this is, that we're in a difficult place. I just want to recognize Rita.
Oh, hi, yes. Um thank you, everyone. Um Susan, I asked, would like to know. Um we you provided us with elementary enrollment, but could you also provide us with class size?
We will be doing that. That um is quite a task, but we will do that in readying ourselves for the budget. So that will be coming, I guess.
I just wanted to see if there was a correlation between the scores and the class sizes. Some of our schools have smaller class sizes, some of them have a little larger. I was just curious about that. And my second question is for Tom. Um Tom, how small of a group do we have for these students at Thames River and Mystic River? The not high-needs students that do, you know, that you can't even like inch out the scores for us, for the science standards?
Typically, the cutoff is less than twenty.
So out of, we have um four.
Well, you're.
Four grades.
And GSS is only in fifth grade, so we are saying for fifth graders at both of those schools, we have less nineteen basically, or less students who meet that criteria in the fifth grade.
So then you're saying the, if we have four classrooms.
No, there's three.
There's three.
Will be. So let's say if there's twenty and he says sixty students. Gee, are you saying then that a lot of these students are high needs?
I'm saying that roughly forty out of those sixty are high needs.
And a high need student could be anybody with a five oh four plan, not basically just, isn't that what you said?
Uh special education, free reduced lunch, or receiving ELL services currently.
Or a combination.
Or, yes, you could, it is an is an or statement, not a and statement. So any one of those things qualify you, you would have the trifecta, um but you just thought once at that point.
Well, that's really incredible, because, I mean, I I don't see why free and reduced lunch would keep you from not, you know, let letting, you know, the the science standards be shown, because I would think a lot of the other schools have that also.
Well, it's it's more that the socioeconomic status of student groups that within that category, there's weren't enough students not in that category to disclose it.
Like, for instance, you heard Steve talk about, he does have a larger population of EL students.
Yes.
So that he's actually considered a bilingual school. He's and so is Groton Middle School. So, you know, and when our students come from other countries, some of them are well-educated and some of them have had little ed- education. Many of them come with no language at all, some come with a little bit of language. So we have to take them where they come and, you know, make them feel comfortable and at home and and really grow. One of the good things I have to say, though, we've brought the EL data to you. Our EL data looks really pretty good. Our our teachers and EL um teachers in Paris are doing a fine job getting them in and and helping them grow. But it takes a few years, as you know, to get from a level one in Lost Links to a level five, where they're reading and they're articulate and they're writing and they can do all those things.
Right. Well, I just, I it is a concern of me when I look at the scores at Mystic River for the science and the math. Um, you know, for the high-needs students.
Yep.
It it's it's, it is concerning. More so than I I believe all the other schools together. So whether we need more resources there um to help out, but there there is.
See about that. That's a good, you know, you brought that up, Rita, and so did Matthew, so I'll definitely, we'll look at that.
Okay.
Careful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I'm not hearing any more questions, um we're going to move on. I once again just wanted to say thank you very much on the, on behalf of the board, the good work that you guys are doing um for our district. Um we just, you guys are a class act. Thank you. So we are going to, you guys don't have to say if you want to go. No, I know, spending a charming evening with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. Thank you for working so hard.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so Tom, enrollment data.
Uh so like I said before, this is just a really high-level look at enrollment. This is not kind of breaking it down by demographics, socioeconomic status. That is something we typically do later on in the school year, kind of as a a main presentation of the night.
Good night. Thank you.
So you can see here, it's it's broken down by school. We do have some variation um between October first, which is kind of our snapshot date for the state of Connecticut, from last year versus this year. We are a net plus seven overall, so we have seven more students overall this October first than we do last October first. The largest variability is at Charles Barnum, where you can see we gained twenty students this year. That is not a surprise. Um is, we'll be seeing whether or not that holds throughout the school year, so I think we had talked a little bit about this earlier. The Navy did not move families on the same timeline as they did in prior years. They held off a lot of those moves from Groton from the base, but we started intaking a lot of students early from the base. So therefore, on October first, we have kind of a a lot of people in limbo. So we are starting to see some of those families be reassigned to the basic of the country at this point. I expect that some of that enrollment will balance out at Charles Barnum. However, I will tell you, Charles Barnum in general has by far the highest demand you know, for that popular, for that uh for a particular school. So Charles Barnum also has a largest number of magnet students right now at other buildings. Do you think Charles Barnum is twenty above where they were last year? And we have a ton of students who intend, who are actually going to other buildings. So Charles Barnum ha- has a lot of demand for the size of the building that it is.
I was just doing mental math and I could tell that we're higher, we have higher enrollment this year than we had last year.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thirty-one versus two thousand one hundred thirty-eight.
Yeah, we're a plus seven.
Yeah.
Um so, you know, a little bit, you know, within kind of normal variability, you know, we lose two or building gain to another. But outlier really is Barnum this year. Um it it remains to be seen whether that's going to be a one-year thing or not, or whether it's just going to continue. And as EB keeps hiring more workers and as our sub-basics expands, are we just going to have more and more young sailor families in town? And we just have more and more demand at Charles Barnum. It seems like that is the direction of this though.
But it's good we have inter-district magnets to be able to handle that situation.
And uh you know, that would be important. We did have, Charles Barnum had the largest demand for students interested in going to some of our magnet schools last year. Hopefully, that continues. It helps us kind of balance that load between kind of increasing demographic population in that school zone and move them to kind of other schools. And then for Groton Middle School, we we do have a little bit more variability here, you know, plus to a Groton Middle. We're down a little bit at Pitch High School, but I did want to point out that most of that is doing a very small senior class this year. So while our other grades are averaging around two seventy-five, two eighty, our senior class is only two hundred and twenty-nine as of today. So it is a very small senior class. My expectation is when this eighth-grade group comes up next year, we will get back towards that one thousand fifty mark roughly. So this seems to just be a slight anomaly with this small graduate class this year. Um I don't anticipate this as a a larger trend of leaving.
Yeah, class sizes are more in the three hundred range at the middle school, and then they go up to the high schools. So that was an anomaly for that senior class.
Because in this this cohort, uh that is now seniors, has been small for the past four years. They, this has been a small group that's just been moving along.
Our K cohort is our biggest. If they stayed with us the whole time, they're closer to four hundred.
Any questions on where we are? So that that is our October one snapshot date. That's the date for kind of all of our numbers for the state of Connecticut that we Those are the students who win the test at the end of the year will be included in those numbers next year.
Yes.
William.
With the the number of students that come into the school district with military, is there any type of assessment that we do initially?
They usually come with assessment that we look at from their other school. From their other schools. Um we do sometimes give the comprehensive S back, which is um a test that um really is like having an S back test, but it's off-season, so you can give it at any time. So when there's real concerns or questions, we have other assessments that we can give them to find out how they're doing. If they don't come with a portfolio rich enough for us to determine.
And in this day and age, do we change their grade? You know, if they come in as a third grader, but we assess them in their first grade level.
I think that's something that's done with the the principal and the family. The the other thing is in Connecticut, you can start school as a four-year-old that, you know, in kindergarten. Other states, you have to be five. So sometimes there's differential with age, just because of the nature of how states.
Isn't there also that um compact military compact?
I was just going to say, so last, on the, on voting day last week with PD Day, I met with the six-twelve council team and the representatives for the military compact, and that that also does govern it. Um from K to eight, basically, if a student is is sent to us as a military family, as a sixth grader, they come to us as a sixth grader, and that's where they're placed. Um the only exception to that is that they're at the high school level, they don't have the requisite amount of credits to be qualified, say, as a junior in Groton. They might be placed as a sophomore, that's only a amount of credits that they have. Because the the credit requirements might be very different in some states versus Connecticut. But for example, like some town, some districts in other states might only require twenty credits to graduate, or require twenty-six. So because of that scale, they're they're placed really where they come in with the amount of credits that they have.
If they've taken algebra in the middle school and algebra one, and they need algebra two in eighth grade, that has certainly happened, you know, over the years. And the the good thing about having that campus is that they get dropped off at the high school. There's usually a few students either in a higher level math or science. And then we have someone walk them back or we get them back, bless them back to the middle school.
Can I just follow up on to another part of the military compact, just those families, within ten days of the family asking the prior district, that they usually do before they leave, we have to get all the educational records from that prior district. So typically, our military families are coming in and we have a complete file on that student before they're starting. So we we have really all the data, well, not all the data, we have a lot of the data we need to go to accurately place that student before they're ready to register the class.
And our schools do the same thing. So before they leave town, as long as they're given the information, they give them all their files.
So is there national testing anymore for like third grade?
Well, S back was supposed to be that. The Common Core standards, as a military child myself, I was very excited about the Common Core standards. I thought they were good, rigorous standards. They were supposed to be national standards, as was the test. Some states decided to go with it and some states didn't. So.
It depends where they come from.
Depends. But that's unfortunate.
Yeah, because.
That would have been a good thing.
But to our students, yeah.
Yeah.
At at a at a disadvantage, possibly.
We're lucky that some might use common metrics like a Lexile score. We're looking at some might use common metrics like a Lexile score or reading levels, something like that. So the, the assessment they use might be different, but the metric that comes out of it might be the same. So there's a lot of times there's good data in there for us to be able to place them. But to your point, to have that kind of universal screener is something we've been having kind of internal discussions with, especially at the middle school level. Because I think there, there can be such a wide range of ability level with students coming in. So no, we're, we're having those monitors.
Andrea? I, I guess this, this is for you Susan. I'm really interested in the contact. And what happens? How does that set with the, the comp, the, the contact if a student has in with only twenty. Credits and we require X and Y number more, and what happens in terms of, of the contact?
Um, so in terms of where they're placed at the grade level? So we, we did just have this, oh, what is, I think she's considered the state commissioner of the compact. I think that's what her title is. Uh, she was here presenting to us.
Yeah, Laura. That's fantastic.
Yes.
Yeah.
And she, so she, we, I don't think she had ever contemplated that question either. Uh, cause it is kind of a caveat within the compact, but our understanding is, is because it's the high school level based on credit. So if they come in thinking they're a junior, but they don't actually qualify as a junior based on the credits, then they are considered a sophomore on that.
And how does that square with the contact?
Well, I think that's within the realm.
That's within the realm of what the L E, like local education.
Alright, thank you.
But I, I also know, I mean, she, she certainly offered to come back. It was great presentation. I think she could do a presentation for the board.
For the, and the administrators.
And the administrators.
Yeah.
I think it was a, a great hour, frankly. And we, I learned a lot. I thought I knew a lot about the compact, but we learned a lot in that hour. So I think that'd be great to have her back.
Yes, definitely will.
Rita, I saw that your hand was up. Did you make a decision?
No, this is, it was answered already. Thank you.
Okay, great. You know, one of the things that I am wondering if we could have is. Um, if, if this could just be printed one more time into the board notes about having, what is the enrollment? The, like, the top enrollment of each school? So like, it's good to know that we've got enrollment of nine, nine oh eight, but what, what is our max capacity?
Oh.
Oh, like fire code? But what is the capacity of how many kids that we can, that we can have?
Building.
That's the word.
That's something I have to check with Sam.
What is the building capacity?
Yeah, but it could also be like F K E capacity too.
Yeah, that just would be kind of, I, I don't know, maybe no one else is interested.
I don't think we're at capacity at any of our schools. Full capacity, but full capacity, full capacity would be.
Pretty close.
Yeah, and, and, and if it can't be done, I just thought it would be interesting. Rita?
I, I thought it was nine hundred at our middle school when we, the, when the school was built. But maybe not.
That may have been the target enrollment, cause I think you're supposed to with state funding hit ninety-five percent of target enrollment to be eligible, I believe. So that may have been the target to hit nine hundred. That would make sense.
Okay, cause I, we always thought it was a little small compared to the high school.
Yeah, well, they're not building them like they used to, Rita. Wants them occupied a hundred percent participation, a hundred percent of the time, and they don't give every teacher a classroom.
I know, and the classrooms are smaller also. But you know, I've always thought if we had an issue, we could always move a grade up to the high school. They're right there. So if, if it ever got really overcrowded, you know, that's a possibility.
I love your can-do attitude, Rita. Alright, any other questions, um, for our enrollment data? If hearing none, Tom, thank you very much. And I, your last day in the district is.
Friday.
Friday. So we, um, we wish you, um, a lot of luck and thank you so much for really partnering with the board and understanding all this information. Um, and we wish you really a lot of luck.
Thank you. I very much appreciate it.
Alright.
We'll miss them for sure. Laurie, come join. Jen Anthony, um, and Renita Casey who's on have also been part of the DEI group. Who've helped, um, craft our HR diversity plan. So we've had got a whole.
Worked in collaboration.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. Um, so.
Are you part of this? She is here for the mentoring program.
Why don't you, why don't you come, come join us? We have an open table. She has many hats.
So I want to talk just a little bit about our, our current plan in, in our work to diversify the workforce. Um, that is what is on the screen currently. Um, this is our plan for the next three years.
So is there any way that you could enlarge that? That would be really swell of you.
So, um, so this is our plan, the next three years. I've been in the process of developing, uh, this plan starting, um, over the summer. Our last plan, our last five-year plan expired at the end of the last school year. Um, so this plan will take us forward the next three, three years. We've, um, what we've looked at or focused on are programs that we've seen success with. And then also some new initiatives, which I'll, I'll speak to a little bit. But, um, we're gonna continue our efforts around our grow our own programs, both in district and out of district. The program that's run through crack, um, that program for teacher and residents, we're gonna continue that. Program we've, um, since we, uh, this is our second year of participation. And in two years' time, we have, uh, brought in three educators of color in two years. So it's really having, um, an absolute impact on our ability to bring educators of color into the district. Um, so we're gonna continue to participate in that. It's a good pipeline for us to foster those individuals while they're going through their teaching program. And then bring them on to the district after they've completed their program, which has been going very successfully. Um, and Renita, who is, uh, I saw, I think she was in the audience here on Zoom. She actually sponsored one of our placements. So, um, she actually, um, took one of the first placements at Catherine Pelmaskey. And worked with that teacher for an entire year. We hired the teacher this year and she is her sponsor teacher, um, for the year. Um, continuing to support Cheyenne as she's on her path to teaching now. So, and it's a real success story. The program really is working. Um, we will continue to look at scholarships for Pitch High School, uh, students. We started that program a couple of years ago and that's really was to encourage students to be on the pathway to teaching. If they had an interest in teaching, we wanted to support them with some scholarship money. It's not a significant amount of money. It's really just encouraging the dialogue, encouraging down the path. And that ties into the work that we want to do around offering a teacher pathway curriculum at the high school. To really expand that interest and have, um, have courses that will allow them to start that study much sooner. Instead of waiting until they get to college or in an ed preparation program. Um, so, so that, those two will, will connect very nicely to support the students at the high school. And then, um, we're looking at additional, uh, minority recruitment venues. We continue to network thanks to Sacrament. She's very helpful with the Martin Luther King scholars and, and making connections for us. Um, so that's been very helpful that we were allowed to make connections and bring those individuals into the district and. Work with us while they're still in their, um, still in their education programs. Yeah. Um, we're also looking at, one of the new initiatives we're looking at is considering. Um, a more robust support system for our substitute teachers. So one of the things that, that I've worked on is I have put in for a grant to purchase some software. That would allow us to offer professional learning communities for our substitute teachers. So much more robust, it would allow them to, um, do online curriculum to enhance their skills, their classroom management. Their lesson planning, all of the things that, um, prepare them well to be teachers. So, and it does take a little pressure off with the rest of the organization, the administrators, they're so busy. You know, we can't expect that they're gonna be able to deliver curriculum to substitute teachers while they're trying to focus all their energy on delivering curriculum to students. So, and, and based on what we all just saw and heard, it's, you know, it's a heavy lift. So the goal with this is, is twofold. It's to provide that support that the schools need to enhance those individuals and their skill sets. But then also get them better prepared so that they can move through the continuum and hopefully become teachers of the future. Um, so that is, we, we've applied for a grant, a grant for the software, as I mentioned, we're waiting to hear if we're being awarded or not. But, um, if not, we'll obviously have to kind of revisit that, you know. Um, professional learning community format and framework and see what that looks like and see how we can accomplish it. But I think that's kind of a, a path to, um, like I said, pathway to teaching, but I think also to retain our substitute teachers. You know, we all know they're hard to find, so this we're hoping will be a retention tool. Because not a lot of districts have what I'm talking about, so it's kind of on the cutting edge. And I think, um, if we can roll something like this out, I think we might even be able to attract substitutes into the district. Who maybe want to grow and become educators in the future. Um, and then we'd like to survey those individuals to see what's important to them. You know, what, why are they here? Why did they stay? And so those are some, some of the things that we're gonna focus on is growing that substitute teacher population to help the district overall. And then obviously help with the need, obviously of covering classrooms. That's the ultimate goal. Um, but we'd like to have them, uh, feel more valued, retain them longer. Um, cause I think overall that's helpful for the district. Um, so those are the, some of the things that we will continue to focus on. Um, we're doing a significant amount of outreach, just in general with recruitment, with staffing the way it is. There's a significant amount of outreach going on, on a daily, weekly basis. We continue to do events in the community, um, partner with partners in the community. One of the things that we have just, uh, uh, rolled out is we're actually trying for the first time. Some radio advertising, some actual radio spots. So, uh, for November and December, we are doing some radio spots on three local radio stations. So let them know that we're hiring, um, come see us. Um, so it'll be a good test to see, kind of test the waters and see what that recruitment venue brings us. Um, you know, obviously we're out in the public and we're doing all those things, but we want to take an opportunity to take advantage of. Maybe testing a new recruitment method to see, you know, if it reaches more and more people. Certainly we're on Facebook and we're, um, doing Facebook posts and, and boosting those posts. And we are seeing actual positive results from the Facebook recruitment. Um, it seems to be going quite well, so. Um, I think one of the questions you had was kind of the current state of staffing. And then I'll talk a little bit about the, um, the demographic information, um. So, um, I think you're looking for just a general update on how the staffing's going. So we have made some progress since I think I was here last. Um, we're looking for a small number of tutors, still about ten. Um, we're down to about thirty paraprofessional positions, which is down, it sounds like a lot. And it is a lot, um, down significantly from where we were.
And where were we before?
We were up forty-two. Yeah, and that, that was coming off of last year, which we were even higher. We were probably closer to fifty when we left last year.
Okay.
Here we don't have that.
Yeah, I think we have up a different slide.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just talking in general. Yeah. Some general.
I'll take it off just so we're not confused.
Still was a little, was a little.
Yeah, and, um, and we have a small number of kindergarten, I think we're still looking for about ten or eleven of those. Um, but overall, the rest of the staffing is pretty stable. Those are the areas that we're having the most difficulty for sure.
I, I heard, um, building subs have been hard to get, but I think we're down to only having, needing five.
Five, correct.
Out of the whole district.
Yeah.
And that each of the schools has a few, three, I think, at the elementary.
And then. Three, three at the, uh, yeah, four at the larger elementary, the two larger elementary. And then I believe it's six at the middle school, high school.
Rita?
Yes, um, Laurie, how are we in terms of our, um, pay for subs compared to the surrounding towns?
I would have to check it again. Um, I think we were comparable, but not. Uh, there are, there are districts in the area who have advanced those wages for substitute teachers for sure.
We advanced them last year when we did the Paris and the minimum wage.
Right.
Stoning Town is about thirty dollars more a day than Groton, I've heard. So it would be good to look at that and think about what we need to do. You know, it might have something to do with our pay structure.
Uh, yeah, agreed Rita. We will need to look at that again for sure, uh, before we, um, go into the budget season. Um, so I appreciate you asking about that. We did get some data regarding paraprofessionals recently. Um, Learn had done a very kind of informal, uh, survey. And, you know, that, that data was, uh, certainly more, more concerning than what we've seen in the past. There are several districts in the local area who have increased their wages significantly. So we have that data and we can share that with the board when we go through the budgeting.
And we do understand that several of the districts have large amount of R S or even more than Groton got. And so they're putting those funds in to pay for non-certified staff. Which will provide a nice cliff for them in two years. What do you do then thereafter? If you've paid all that?
Right, right. So we'll be going into negotiations with Paris in the spring, so that's a conversation we will have.
How did that happen? Cause we extended.
We did an extension, yes. I know you feel like you just finished, right?
Yeah.
Start again. Um, but, so that'll be, uh, data that we will certainly bring to the table during the budget process. And then also as we look at negotiations, we'll certainly have to bring that information forward for the board to take a look at.
Andrea has a question.
Yeah. How do we compare in terms of those, those districts that are paying higher than we are? How do we compare instead in terms of student population?
Um, it's, it, I would say it's more geographic than equal student population, but we could, we can provide that data. We can certainly get student data associated with the districts.
Norwich is one that has done that, but they're a K eight system.
Right.
And they have some significant needs too in that area and have funds to be able to provide those big increases.
Right.
So now does Phil put up his?
Please, thank you, Bill. So, uh, this is some actual data that I wanted to share with the board. This is data, this is, uh, what's called an EEO five report. This is a report that we have to file with the federal government every two years. Which basically identifies our staffing population by ethnicity and, and race. So, uh, what I want to do is just kind of share this data. Um, I went all the way back to twenty sixteen, cause that was about the time we really started to do a lot of targeted work. Around, um, how we're gonna diversify the workforce. Um, that's about where our prior five-year plan started. Um, so, uh, we went all the way back to that point. And this is kind of one of the measures that we use just to see every couple of years. Where are we and how we progressed? So I'm not gonna go through all the numbers per se on the screen, cause you've seen the table. But a couple of things I just wanted to point out, some of the most recent developments in the data are. We have seen in twenty twenty-two, um, I would say the largest amount of increase in some of the populations. And in twenty twenty-two, we saw an increase in the Hispanic and, and Latino males. Um, a sizable increase in Hispanic and Latino females. Um, an increase in black or African-American male, and I apologize, I see the typo there. I see a typo in the, in the African-American column.
African?
Yes, so apologize for the typo. And then, um, female classified as two or more races, we saw, you know, us, you know, we saw a sizable increase there. So those are the populations that have grown within our workforce in the last couple of years. So that is what the data is telling us. We're making, you know, prior to that, I think we're making kind of steady small gains in these numbers. Um, some of the more sizable changes appear to be from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two.
Laurie, is this for all employees or non-certified, this is this entire cohort?
This is, this is all employees. Um, it includes, it doesn't report a small number of kind of part-time, so substitute teachers and things like that, but. Yeah, F T, yeah.
Well, they're F T E and they're non-cer.
Correct.
Custodians.
Yes.
So it would be our entire workforce.
Yeah, other than like substitute. Yeah, other than like substitute teachers, they don't really capture, right?
Sizable increase with our white and male. White male and white women as well.
Yeah, the white female.
Yeah.
So um, I don't see, Susan had mentioned about the D E I committee and some of the work that 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 committee is doing, so. Um, I do uh, work on that committee with Jen and with Renita. Um, and we continue to look at how we are going to um, continue to diversify the workforce, we collaborate as a committee. Um, and then also we take a deeper dive into these numbers on an annual basis, so we don't look at it every two years, we do have an annual. Uh, deeper dive report that breaks this down further, and if the board wanted to see that, we can absolutely send that out with the board notes.
I think I would love to see that specifically with um, certified staff, but that break.
Yeah, because it gives a nice breakdown, it breaks down the certified staff by grade level, so elementary, middle, high school. And then breaks out the paraprofessional, so it kind of takes this and breaks it down on an annual basis, a little bit deeper.
Administration versus teachers too.
Correct, administration.
That would be great, yeah, thank you, Lori.
Yeah, no problem.
Lori, that's, that's the committee I'm on.
Yes, thank you Andrea, yes, yeah, there's a, there's a number of wonderful participants who have been very.
I just wanted to make sure that.
I work at C K and we have. A teacher resident who is now a full-time staff, we also have another teacher in residence who is working with. One of our full-time teachers and this year we have a lot of paraprofessionals who are um. Non-white.
Of color.
Of color and who also speak different languages and just walking through the building this year.
Must be wonderful.
The students mirrored and the people who are working with them is really heartwarming, so your efforts are. It's just nice to see and you can just see the connections between the kids if they feel like. You know, they're, they're people like them and they're in the school.
Yeah, they see their peers, yeah, that's great. It's good to hear.
Yeah, thanks, so kudos to you.
Any other questions from the board?
So for student teachers, um, what's our hiring rate? Like, how effective are we with retaining student teachers, you know, we were thinking growing our own? Um, are we very effective at that or are we missing out and what are we?
We, we were so effective that sometimes I think that held us back from getting a more diverse staff. Because when you have an intern or a student teacher, you know them, you've educated them. So when they came to the table with others, sometimes they almost had an inside track, so. The reason we're doing this new program where we're bringing in people of color to do this, um, you know, internship. Um, it really sets them up for success to be trained by our highly skilled teachers to get to know the school community. So the answer is yes and no, you know, if we do, we do feel like we do a nice job. Supporting them and getting them into the school, but we just want to make sure that that population of interns is a diverse population as well.
Which is some of the goal with the professional learning committee, um, community, we're hoping to attract. More individuals into the district who have some of that diverse background, because we'll have something to help, you know, develop them and bring them along.
So are you able to choose like students, you know, the college students in education? Are you just assigned a student or do you get, you know?
Well, it's student.
One and you can choose.
A student teacher comes to learn and we don't pay for them, we just teach them. An intern, an internship like the one that we're talking about is someone who comes from a university who we pay. A certain amount for, similar to a, a long-term building sub.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that doesn't, you have it though with the teachers in residence.
Yes, correct, but the other internship, you know.
That's, that was your question.
We don't choose, so we're. So how can we change that?
Well, here's what I would say, they, the universities reach out to us with student teachers who are interested in a placement with us. I'll be honest, most of the time it's driven geographically by the student teacher, they want to have a placement close to where they live. So they will tend to reach out to the districts within their community, because that's where they want to work, um, so we do have some choice. Um, but and we cast the net with the university saying, you know, bring us your individuals, bring us your student teachers. Um, and if we feel like they're not the right placement for us, we can certainly choose. Now, I'll be honest, it hasn't been enough volume for us to have to make that choice, you know, it's. It get, you know, the, the student teaching placements are not easy to come by, because there's so many districts that, you know, they're being. Um, they're being moved around the districts based on the student, the student teacher's interest geographically.
So our growth, your own may be a paraprofessional who wants to go into education. And they tend to be more diverse group.
Correct.
Or our own students, if, you know, they go off to school and want to be a teacher and want to come back and teach if they're alma mater. That happens too, so we can cultivate some of that with our growthy own.
Yeah.
And pay attention and, you know, say, come, come back and student teach here, you know?
I mean, it's a good question, because the grow our own is really to tackle every possible avenue, right? So it is teachers, it is Paris, it is high school students, we're trying to, you know, really. Speak to each population that we have access to that may have this interest in growth in mind.
And it'd be great to know that, because you mentioned Howard and H P C U.
Yes.
It'd be great to know that they are, you know, calling to say, hey, we have a student that wants to, you know, do a student teacher.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You know, or us reaching out to them.
Yeah.
Say, we have, you know, X number this year.
Well, we had Carmita Hodge traveled down to her alma mater, Howard. And she did make a couple of nice connections for us and and met some people so that she can network with people who are there now. So that could happen in the future for us.
Yeah, we just started that partnership for the exact reason that you're describing, we actually did make a placement from there. At, at the middle school, so we actually, um, you know, we're able to make those connections and then bring someone into the organization. So I think it's definitely going to be a good partnership going forward.
Any other questions?
Do we, have we tried to use our alumni association or faculty or even. Reach out into the community to let them know that uh, we will be having openings if they know somebody who's in a. Teaching program somewhere to make use of the resource that we have at them.
Yeah, so we, we do uh, have very strong connections with our retired teachers in the community. Um, you know, frankly, one just came to me the other day and brought me a candidate that we ended up hiring, so we absolutely spread the word. Cast the net as wide as possible, um, get out in the community and I, and I'll be honest, our retiree's been very helpful, they've referred. Individuals to us, um, any leads we get, we immediately, you know, contact them and get them in. You know, if they're interested, we jump on them and get them going, yeah.
Yay, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you, it's good to see you.
Yeah, thanks.
Welcome. So we have been working very, very closely with Jen and with Sharon Schick and Jen and Sharon have. Worked together to um, really reboot the mentoring program and a lot of that has been research and then some development. Um, using some of the tools that we had used in the past, but revitalizing the program. So I'm going to let Jen talk a little bit, I think she has a little slideshow for us. Jen, and when did you become our um, coordinator of this?
So um, for those of you who don't, don't know me, I'm Jen Anthony, I have been in Grotton since two thousand. I've been a literacy coach, pre-K teacher, kindergarten teacher, first grade teacher.
Math coach.
Currently in the math specialist at C K and I took on this additional role last month. So I.
So welcome.
Thank you very much.
She completed her O ninety-two to be an administrator.
Yes.
Yes, she and Renita Casey, if she's still on, shout out.
She's over there giving me moral support. So I just wanted to share with you a little bit about the um, presentation that I gave to. The interview committee and then kind of give you a little bit of. Where are we, the progress that we've made so far? So when I was thinking about the mentor program and I feel like I've been a mentor informally for many years here in Grotton. Um, it's just the school that I've been at for many years, just lends itself to needing. Um, adult role models and I just naturally think that that is in my wheelhouse. Um, so I started to think about how the mentor program and revitalizing the mentor program could. Um. Bridge some of the gaps that we have with our academics and also um, thinking about our diversity. Equity and inclusion statements. Um, so. Um, so I was really thinking a lot about the last part of the D E I vision statement, ensuring that all groups feel valued, actively engaged and empowered. And what groups do we have in Grotton that we can really target using the mentor program? Um, so on the next slide, I feel like we just talked about this at the elementary level. When they're talking about the high needs versus non-high needs, um, and this is just the. A mirror of the aspect data that they showed, um, I didn't put any labels on it, because it doesn't really matter. Because you can see across the board here, Grotton, that we have a gap between our non-high needs and our high needs students. Um, at all the levels, so when you're thinking about the groups of students that are in the, in that subgroup. It's our E L L population, which we have supports for, it's our special ed population, which we also have supports for. But there's a large group of kids who could cross over to both of those groups. Um, but may not cross over into either one of those groups are, are um, students with. Those socio, socioeconomic status, so can we use the um. Role model mentor program to maybe target some of those on the cusp kind of kids who may be falling through the cracks. And just be in need of some support through adults in our community. So when I was thinking about who needs a mentor, um, I kind of thought about some snippets and I've had all of these kids. In my classes, um, so on the top left, you'll see there's one of those kids is Joe, he comes to school most days. He's a very capable student, but he's disengaged, um, he truly believes that the only talent he has is. Being a soccer player and he's a pretty good soccer player, but has never had any soccer instruction, because his family. Is on a very limited income and they can't afford that, so Joe needs to feel valued. He needs somebody to tell him that you could do something with soccer and maybe not, you have a lot of other things you could do besides soccer. Um, and the top right is Jorge, um, I've definitely had Jorge's in my class, he comes to school every day, he tries really hard. But he comes to school at six o'clock in the morning, because that's when his single dad drops him off, because he needs to get to work. And he doesn't get picked up until six at night, so by the time he gets home, his dad is really tired from working really hard to support him. Um, and in class, he starts acting out and seeking adult attention. Um, Jorge needs a mentor to become engaged in school and to have an adult who can support him. Um, who is available for him during the day. And finally, in the bottom, one of those girls is Alina, she comes to high school every day, she works hard and has good grades. When school is over, her friends participate in after-school activities, but she did not, her mom works second shift, she needs to go home. She is the caretaker of her siblings, um, once her siblings go to bed, she does her homework. Um, her friends at school start talking about college, she can't see this in her future, because she has responsibilities. Alina needs to be empowered, she needs to know that there are avenues for her to pursue what she needs to do. Um, or what she is capable of doing and at the same time continue to support her family. So I applied for the job and I got the job and started doing some research, um. I hooked up with the governor's prevention partnership and learned a lot about what it takes to have a quality program. Um, the mentor dot org site um, has a ton of information about the national mentor program. And Cave also has policies and procedures that should be followed if you're going to have a quality program in your school. Um, and these are the quality program standards that um, are highlighted, you need to have a trained program coordinator. Um, a mentor screening process or fa- background checks, um. Need to have mentor training, an initial mentor training and ongoing mentor training as those mentors stay in the process. Um, we need to establish a criteria or process to determine um, the mentor mentee matches. Um, ongoing mentor supervision and support and program evaluation. So as I'm working with Sharon Schick, we're keeping all of these um, standards in mind as we get the. Program back up and running. Um, so this is just a kind of a snippet of what I see as year one, um, fall twenty twenty is already started. Um, Sharon and I are attending the governor's prevention partnership training, um, we're in week four, it meets once a week for two hours. Um, I've worked with Lori and with Phil and with Sharon, developing some. Um, policies and procedures that we need to have in place, um, before we pull in more mentors. To work with our kids, we're establishing a district mentor committee, which is going to be composed of a building liaison from every school. Possibly more than one liaison at the middle school and teacher representation from each school, so that we have. Input from all um, parties as we move forward. We've started the community outreach, Sharon has been um, instrumental in reaching out to local businesses, she's attended the. Um, Eastern Connecticut Chamber um, education meeting last month, um, she's already been talking to. Chelsea Grotton Bank was very interested in partnering with us. Um, and we are working on creating our mentor training sessions, which we have to have in place before we can. Pair mentors with kids.
We've also outreach to um, EB and they have a mentor coordinator at EB.
Barbara.
Barbara.
Yes.
And they actually have subgroups of these mentors, so they have a black Latino engineering group. Um, you know, they have women in engineering, so they have all different. Varieties of mentorships that can happen in our schools, even with robotics team, so that's very exciting.
This, this community has plenty of people who we can tap into. So moving forward into the winter, our plans for winter are, um, January is Na- National Mentor Month, so we're trying to think of some. Recruitment events that we can um, host to get more mentors involved. We're going to finalize the mentee referral process, um, within our committee. Um, we're going to finalize the mentee selection criteria and we're going to identify mentors, um. I've been doing a lot of outreach to um, other districts who have um, successful mentorship programs. And the ones that are most successful have the mentors starting at the elementary level and those mentors follow the kids to the middle school and the high school. So that relationship builds across the years, so I would like to, when we finally um. Get all the processes in place and we start um, getting mentees, I would like to prioritize. Kids in grade five and grade eight, so that we can pair those mentorships up before the school year ends, so then when those. Fifth graders go to sixth grade, they will already have that mentor going with them and the same thing for the eighth graders going into ninth grade. And then kind of trickle down from there, so that we can start that um, process of mentors moving with kids. And finally, in the spring, we'll have our annual program recognition event, we will continue our outreach and we will meet with the. Um, mentor committee to evaluate and revise any of the first uh, procedures that we've been working on thus far. See if we need to make any tweaks for the following year. So what we've done so far, um, as I said, Sharon and I have attended the mentor staff training. Um, we have done a lot of work with the um, creation of the, some of the procedures. Um, we've done school-based outreach, I've reached out to, like I said, many districts who have successful programs. And I've tried to dig deep into the people that we still have in district who are part of the mentor program. How to find out, we actually do have three um, active mentor-mentee relationships happening in the middle school that we didn't know about. So we have those three, we have a building coordinator at the middle school, um. Marissa Gallo, who has been very helpful in kind of giving me some informations of what things have happened in the past, so we can. Kind of build upon those. Um, we're creating the mentor um, committee, I'm going to send out the email this week to the building. Committee. I'm gonna send out the email this week to the building principals looking for their recommendations for their liaisons and for. Teacher representation, so we can hopefully have the first meeting. I would like the first week of December so that we can. Really focus on the mentor. Mentor-mentee match. So once we start getting some more mentors in, we can start those matches as soon as we can, hopefully in January. I met with Rebecca Bayes this morning and she is gonna be phenomenal with our community outreach and public relations. She's already started working on the web. The webpage. So on the GPS website, we're gonna have a separate mentor program website.
And she's so good about getting it out on Facebook.
Yeah, she's gonna network through Facebook. We're going to make a promo video. A little two-minute video with hopefully some of our past mentors kind of advertising what the benefits of being a mentor are. She's making flyers with little QR codes, so we can hang up the flyers and people could just scan the QR code and that. QR code will go right to. Like a little, not Google survey, but something similar to a Google Google survey, which would just tell the person that. I'm interested in being a mentor and then I will get that information and we can start the process. I've worked with Lori. We already have the. Mentor application process completed. So we have our steps that we're gonna follow. Should somebody want to be a mentor. Lori's. Department has sticks the Apple track, so we added some additional questions that we thought needed to be in there based on the governor's partnership. So that's all finished. And. Since we don't have an initial mentor training, a current training with all the components that they suggest that we have. The mentor director for West Hartford Public Schools has offered to do an online training that. Sharon and I are gonna sit in on and we have three mentors that have already completed a training a while ago. Want to get started, so we're all gonna join in to her training so that I can see what the training looks like and create our own. And then we can get those three people up and running or waiting to be mentors.
The other thing we've set for sustainability in the future is to have the community coordinators. Help be the conduit for welcoming people into the building. So if there's any chance that they can be part of any of this.
They're definitely in the roles and responsibilities. So I basically talked about, but moving into winter, we're gonna finalize the referral process, plan for the recruitment in January. Rebecca's working on the advertising and the only other thing is we need to figure out supplies cuz there are. Two schools that still have their supplies from long ago, but none of the other schools have any mentor supplies, so.
So my guess is that that would need to get to Susan. She puts together her budget so that we can figure out how to, how to make that happen.
We may have some resources in our enrichment section because we've had other grants to help support it. So there might be a way to at least get some startups.
There may also be a way to, depending on the resources you want. Can't be sure of anything. I'm sure our community would be forthcoming. Materials if there were asked. Sharon told me that this would be the twenty fifth year. Which from a communication point of view is a wonderful hook to. Rebuildify the program. Timing for February or March might not be harmful. Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm very excited about it.
This is great.
Definitely needed and.
We've been, we've been waiting for you.
And they've been working. They actually know each other because Jen Anthony was Sharon Schick's granddaughter's teacher. In the first grade at CK. So that worked out. We, and we didn't plan it that way, but it just worked out really nicely and. Jen, thank you. We are, this has been, this has been a hot issue for all of us and so. To know that we've got, we've got some thinking. Beverly.
I too just wanna say thank you to Jen. It was an excellent presentation and good luck to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanted to wish you all good luck also. I'm so glad it's being revived. Thank you.
It it just needs that extra tender loving care. And a little bit of a reboot and less COVID.
So my, my sense is, is that this may be some of our ways of addressing the difference between I need. And seeing. So.
That could be another intervention.
So our last agenda item before the adjournment is items that we want to bring forward. Um, just, I have a couple of questions for Susan and staff. Are we going to be able to do our full board meeting at the annex? If we were told by the end of November.
It still says central office, but I feel like in my outlook, it says. Annex.
And that, so I'll find out. So that will be information just to let people know is that we are going to be. I've lost my quorum. Hey, guys, I've lost my quorum.
Well, you have a quorum online.
Well, yeah, you're right. Thank you, Rita. That's unfortunate. Just everyone was leaving. I'm just trying to be, I'm also trying to be mindful of time. So just let people to, just, just to make sure that they follow up where our regular board meeting and it might be at the annex, which would be our first time. Since February of twenty twenty.
It says it on Outlook, so. Gospel.
But we'll, but we'll get that done. I just, I also wanted for people to know is that we're looking at having another art show so that people could do that. And so stay tuned for that for future topics. And so. And. I was, one of the things that people asked me to do was to see if we could have a meeting with the fields committee. And Mark Romano has done some really great work in getting the field committee to understand what we were looking for. Next committee of the whole. We are, it's gonna be, it is all finance and facilities. And so I didn't know how the board would feel if we could have the guys zoom in. And have a conversation specifically around where they're placing the Fitch. Concession, field house, football field bleachers in their larger study. So that we could hear them. It, it might be a little bit of a heavy lift, but maybe Susan and I can adjust the agenda if we can get them there. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm hoping that that might happen next week. Any other future topics? I got yours from this morning.
Kim, I had a question. Tomorrow, those people that are on the AGSA GEA board liaison, that's at four fifteen. And room eleven. I haven't seen an agenda, so maybe somebody could.
We asked for an agenda. Nobody gave us an agenda. The only thing I heard was how many long-term subs or building subs do we need? I got that answer, five. But I'm sure they'll come up with something. We sent it out to Beth and to Peter. So we're just waiting to hear from them.
My, my, my. Question would be about class sizes. To, to the, you know, staff.
Other future topics. Anything else, folks?
Not a future topic, but. It'd be great if we did names and introductions for any of the presenters. Cuz we have a lot and like, I don't know any of those.
And William, and the moments like it started to roll and you're right. That's a, thank you. Thank you for bringing that.
Presentation, some of them were late for us getting them. Yeah, we'll get this on, on Friday. It'd be nice if we get all the presentations.
I, I hear you and I, it, it just, we, we try, actually, it's gotten much better, but yeah.
I think we had to put some things in board notes.
The enrollment, the enrollment data came in, but even that was changed. But no, it needs to be better and we're gonna work on that. Anything else? Kim, I heard Susan said we'd get the class sizes a budget time. Is it possible to get them now?
Sure. Well, we don't have time, so we'll try to get them as soon as we can, but that's a work. That, that takes quite a bit of time. So we will try to do as, as good a job as we can.
Okay, just try to do what you can and maybe we can get them within the next month. I have got a motion for adjournment. Have a second. William, second it. All those in favor, please say aye. You guys, this was a really, really great meeting. Thank you for your thoughtful questions. All right, thank you.
All in favor.